Okay, we're recording. Welcome to Clackamas County's Planning Commission, June 21st, 2021. Tonight, we are addressing two cop plan changes. We have ZO 197-21-CP and ZO 168-21ZAP. And from here, I think we need to do a roll call.
Commissioner Moss. Commissioner Pack.
Yes.
Commissioner Pascoe.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Schrodl.
Present.
Commissioner Peterson.
Present.
Commissioner Lopes here. Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
And Commissioner Stevens is absent.
Great. That was a public time. If we have anybody in the audience that would like to make a public comment that is not has it does not have anything to do with what we're addressing tonight. You'll have time for that later, but tonight we are open right now.
I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay, I guess we move to opening. A public hearing is now open for the consideration of ZO 167-21-CP and ZO 168-21ZAP. An application by Bennett Valerie Henzel for a comprehensive plan map amendment to change the land use plan designation for the subject property from medium density residential MDR to high density residential HDR with a corresponding zone change of the subject property from medium density residential MR-1 to high density residential HR HDR to facilitate further multifamily development subject to a separate design review, land use and land use approval process. Assisting us in this hearing today are several members of the county staff, Principal Planner Martha Fritzy, Senior Planner Melissa Erins, and Administrative Specialist Two Darcy Redheart. The public hearing will be conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. Panelists today's here panelists for today's hearing will include members of the Planning Commission, county staff have both audio and visual capability. The applicant will be added as a panelist during their presentation. If a panelist is participating with audio but not video, members of the audience will not see the panelist's name on the screen, but will be able to hear them when they speak. Audience members who have joined the meeting will have their mics muted unless they wish to testify, and in that case, they'll be called upon to do so by the county staff moderator. Audience members' videos will not be turned on at any time. Today's hearing is being recorded as required by law. The county will make every effort to post the reporting on the county website as soon as possible. The Planning Commission is charged with making recommendations on the application to the Board of County Commissioners. The records from this hearing will be forwarded to the board, which will make final decision on this matter. The board will conduct another hearing on this application on June 21st at 9:30 a.m. That hearing will be a de novo, meaning that the hearing will start a new additional testimony may be offered. Tonight's hearing will not go beyond 10 p.m. If not concluded, it will be continued to date and time. It's date and time certain. The hearing may be continued for other reasons as well. If announcement of an additional hearing date and time is made tonight, it'll be the only notice given of that additional hearing. Conduct of the hearing, the public hearing will be conducted as follows. Planning and zoning division staff report entry into the record of any additional correspondence received. Technical information from other government agents, agencies. Testimony by the applicant or representative, maximum length 60 minutes. Testimony by representatives of recognized community planning organizations or handlers. Maximum length 10 minutes per CPO or handler. Testimony by proponents of the application, maximum length 3 minutes per speaker or more as determined by the chair. Testimony by opponents of the application, maximum length 3 minutes per speaker or more as determined by the chair. Testimony by persons who are neutral on the application, maximum length 3 minutes per speaker or more as determined by the chair. Applicants rebuttal, which is limited to arguments addressing the evidence already on in record, maximum length 30 minutes. Planning and zoning division staff, sir rebuttal, which is limited to addressing evidence already in the record. Closing of the public hearing, planning commission decision and action. Okay, move on to testimony. There is a designated time during the hearing when it will be open for testimony. The chair will make it clear when this is. If you want to provide testimony, you will utilize the raise hand feature in Zoom. Attendees of on PC and iPad, you'll have a raise hand button on the Zoom bar, top or bottom, depending on the device. Attendees by telephone use star nine to activate raise hand feature. When the moderator switches you over to provide testimony, your screen will look different for a moment primarily. You will see all participants on the camera, not just when one is speaking. Staff will call upon you when it is time for you to provide testimony. For the re for the record, please state your name and where you are from and who you're representing. When you begin, once you have provided your testimony, your mic will be muted and your screen will be will return to normal. Keep going. Okay, now is a time set for the public hearing related to the previous identified comprehensive plan and zone change applications. This is a quasi judicial land use hearing, which means two important things for those participating in the hearing. First of all, first, all of the criteria that the planning commission can use in reaching a recommendation are listed in the notice given for the public hearing and will be identified when the oral staff report is presented. All testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed toward this criteria. Other criteria of the comprehensive plan zoning development ordinance or other land use regulations that the person testifying believes to have to believes to apply to the decision accordingly. Anyone testifying is asked to please direct your testimony to a relevant approved criteria. Second, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties of the opponent of the opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude appeal to the land use Board of Appeals on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of the approval with the sufficient specificity to allow the county to respond to these issues precludes an action for damages and circuit court. Once, once final, the county's decision may be appealed to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. Okay, at this time, I will ask any members of the planning commission to disclose any ex parte contacts bias or conflicts of interest. Please indicate indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact bias or conflicts of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. If anyone wishes to challenge the impartiality of any commissioner, please clearly indicate your intention and do so in any written
Does somebody have something else playing in the background? Okay, I think we're okay now.
So are we good? Okay, move to the staff report.
Hi, everyone, I'll be sharing screen for the PowerPoint. And when I'm finished, please feel free to ask questions and we can discuss anything more as needed. All right, can everyone see that? Okay. Okay. So today we will be discussing and reviewing land use application Z 0167-21-CP and Z 0168-21-ZAP, a comprehensive plan amendment and zone change. The applicant is proposing to change the comprehensive plan land use designation from medium density residential to high density residential and the zoning designation from medium density residential MR1 to high density residential HDR to facilitate future multifamily development that would be subject to a separate design review process. The subject property is located at 14720 Southeast River Road and is approximately 0.48 acres. There are currently no structures on the property. The subject property is located adjacent to downtown Oak Grove neighborhood. The Oak Grove neighborhood was established in 1890 and has a mix of commercial retail services, restaurants, bars, grocery stores, professional offices and schools. The subject property is outlined in blue. And you can see the surrounding zoning districts such as C2, Community Commercial, OSM, Open Space Management, which partially contains the high school property, Office Commercial or the OC Zone and MR MR1 Medium Density Residential, which the subject site is designated. So that first red star there is where the new urban high school is. It also includes the adjacent larger building next to it and the property behind it and open field. It's a North Clackamas School District High School. That second red star there is a preschool daycare center for the Oak Grove neighborhood. Directly adjacent to the subject property is a bar and grill. Further north across the intersection of Southeast River Road with Southeast Oak Grove Boulevard is a grocery store called Vista Grocery Store. Across the street from that is one of two Oak Lodge Water Service District Offices. That first one there and then that next star showing that second office. Across the street, Cross River Road from the subject property is a retail and office and kind of mixed use building. Then further down, there's a denser concentration along Southeast Oak Grove Boulevard of retail shopping restaurants, bars, kind of all those red stars popping up down there. So that just kind of illustrates the neighborhood, the area, the mix of existing kind of commercial, medium density residential and other other uses. The county has provided notice to interested agencies, local governments and property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, consistent with state law and section 1307 of the county zoning and development ordinance. Those pertinent dates are reflected on the screen and they're also laid out in the staff recommendation. No formal comments were received. Staff's recommendation of approval is based on the approval criteria for comprehensive plan amendment and a zone change. Specifically for comprehensive plan amendment consistency findings, we look to the county's comprehensive plan, statewide planning goals and applicable OARs and for this urban property, the Metro Urban Growth Management Functional Plan. For the zone change, we looked to section 1202 of the zoning and development ordinance and specifically the applicable criteria in 1202.03. Regarding the comprehensive plan amendment, staff found the proposed land use designation change from medium density residential to high density residential consistent with all applicable statewide planning goals. Consistency findings start on page seven of the staff recommendation. We've just highlighted two here that had more involved findings. Specifically, staff analyzed the proposed comprehensive plan amendments consistency with statewide transportation planning rule OAR 660-012 and goal 12. The applicant included a traffic impact analysis memo in the submitted application addressing the impacts from the proposal. County engineering staff reviewed the traffic impact analysis memo and concurs with the conclusions in the application submittal that there would be no significant impact on the transportation system as a result of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and zone change due to the minimal level of traffic increases anticipated from the proposed comprehensive plan amendment to high density residential and zone change to HDR high density residential. Based on the submitted traffic analysis and trip generation estimates, the proposed zone change would be consistent with OAR 660-012 and statewide planning goal 12. Regarding statewide planning goal 10, the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and zone change would allow for an increase in needed housing types as identified in the county's housing needs analysis consistent with applicable sections of statewide planning goal 10 and OAR 660-07 and 660-08. Next, staff analyzed the proposed comprehensive plan amendments consistency with the existing comprehensive plans applicable policies. Specifically, staff looked to chapter four land use for the HDR policies and chapter five for transportation, chapter six for housing, chapter seven for public facilities and services, and chapter 11 for the planning process. In chapter four of the comprehensive plan, the policy that staff looks to for a proposal to change a land use designation to high density residential is policy 4.0. The subject property proposed for redesignation must meet at least the first three criteria in bold there. Policy 4.0.1.1 requires staff to analyze the areas surrounding the subject property to determine if there are any major shopping centers, employment concentrations and or major transit centers within proximity of the subject site. Since there's no definition of proximity in chapter four of the comprehensive plan or in the zoning and development ordinance that would quantify a distance or range of distances, the term proximate is supposed to describe. Staff also researched any similar land use decisions or board interpretations that might be present in the surrounding area to see if any precedent existed for interpreting this term. There were no decisions or interpretations found that would provide clarity about how this policy has been interpreted in the past. So staff relied upon the applicant's proposed interpretation of proximity in the context of this policy. The applicant stated in their submitted application that their interpretation of proximate would be that one could reasonably walk to the chosen amenity from the subject property. Staff found that the property's location immediately adjacent to the Oak Grove neighborhood and the interconnected larger McLaughlin Major Shopping and Retail Corridor met the requirements of policy 4.0.1.1. And much more detailed findings for this are available in the staff recommendation. Staff found that downtown Oak Grove functions as a related and interdependent branch of the larger McLaughlin Corridor, Major Shopping Center and provides its own shopping and employment concentrations. Specifically, the list of the existing downtown businesses available on the historic downtown Oak Grove's neighborhood website shows the the list of existing, let's see, sorry, shows the range and mix of employers and shopping opportunities. The New Era High School and preschool across the street also function as employers in this area. And there's a kind of a just a street view showing a section of the downtown neighborhood there in Oak Grove. The subject property is also approximately 1,000 1,000 feet from the trolley trail, which connects the city of Gladstone with the city of Milwaukee and 0.8 miles estimated at a 20 minute walk or a six minute bike ride from the McLaughlin Commercial Corridor. So we kind of tried to draw it out there so you could see where it is in relation to downtown Oak Grove, McLaughlin Corridor and that trolley trail, which kind of runs through and meets up with the downtown Oak Grove neighborhood. Policies 4.0.1.2 and 4.0.1.3 were also found to be met and more specific findings are on page 21 of the staff recommendation. Comprehensive plan chapters five regarding transportation, six regarding housing, seven regarding public facilities and services, and chapter 11 for the planning process, where we also discussed the metro's functional plan and the proposed projects consistency. Were all found, were reviewed and staff found the proposed comprehensive plan amendment consistent with all the applicable policies in each of those chapters. Findings start on page 15 of the staff recommendation. Regarding the zone change, staff found the proposed change from MR1 to high density residential HDR consistent with ZDO section 1202.03 as follows. 1202.03A is here and it requires staff to find the proposed zone change consistent with all applicable goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. That was already detailed in previous sections of staff recommendation and we just reviewed them on a kind of high level. So 1202.03B is regarding the proposed zoning designation, the available public services onsite and that then the need can be accommodated with the implementation of applicable service providers, capital improvement plan, sanitary sewers, surface water management and water. So the public services are able to be provided to the site as evidenced by the statement of feasibility signed by the Oak Lodge Water Services District. And that also covers covers sewer water service and stormwater management. And the specifics of how that would play out in terms of a stormwater plan onsite would be looked at in more details as required in the design review process. But that statement of feasibility was found that was the signed statement of feasibility was found to satisfy this requirement. So for ZDO sections 1202.03C and D, we refer back to that trafficked impact analysis memo. So as previously stated, the memo concluded that there would be no significant impacts to the existing transportation system. And it also concluded that the safety of the existing system is adequate to serve the level of development anticipated by the high density residential HDR zone. Clackamas County Engineering Staff Member Christian Snuffin has reviewed the memo and concurs with the conclusions on it. As the staff is recommending approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and zone change. And I'm happy to go into more detail on any of the sections of the findings for either the comprehensive plan amendment or the zone change. We gave more of a kind of high level summary here in the PowerPoint. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Any questions commissioners? I have one right off the bat.
Sure.
Yeah, that would be, is there any, since we're going from a medium density to a high density, is there going to be a height restriction on the building? That's will be proposed.
I would have to look in the the specific section of our zoning and development ordinance, which I could do fairly quickly, I could just pull it up. But I'm not sure if there would be any change off the top of my head from medium density residential restriction to high density residential Martha might might know, but I can look it up while we're talking if you don't mind giving me a second.
I was trying to beat her to to pulling it up and so, hi, I'm Martha Fritzy with the planning division. To my knowledge, there's no height restriction in high density residential, but the thing is, the the site will naturally be somewhat restricted just because it would only be allowed to build, what is it, half an acre, about 12 units? And so it's not going to be anything extraordinarily large. The high density residential zone has a maximum density of 25 units per acre.
Good. Thank you, Martha.
I am almost to the page. Bear with me one moment. So there's no maximum building height for MR1 or HDR. So like Martha said, there would be other limitations just based on the size of the site and other conditions onsite. But there's no zoning and development ordinance dimensional standard restricting height for either the existing or the proposed zone.
Anybody?
I have a question. I have a question. Half an acre, maximum of 12 units. I see from reading in this that it looks like the proposal was for possible six condominiums as I as I read through it. What are the parking requirements for this site? If it was to go more than six units?
Yeah, happy to address that. So the the condo, the six condo units, that was discussed in the staff recommendation just when we were going reviewing the history of the property. So initially, there was a design review back in, I think it was the 1990s for both this property, this tax lot 1700 and the adjacent tax lot 1800, which were and are still in common ownership. The six condominiums were approved across both of those properties. So I think there were only two approved on the subject property. As far as I know, they were never built. So there were not six condos ever approved on just this property. And I mean, that was again approved under the MR1 zoning designation. In terms of parking requirements, those are looked at in the context of the design review when we get our engineering staff are kind of, we pick out the stormwater issues. We get the fire department involved and we look at the layout of the site and circulation requirements. We don't know exactly how many units they're going to be proposing. They have kind of that minimum maximum density range, but the layout and the parking would, how they're planning it onsite would be really dependent on on their proposal and what we look at as part of that design review. There would be a pre-application meeting required to get all kind of the players in the room and talk about parking requirements in the code. And then there would be the formal design review submittal. So there's a lot of opportunity for input from people that are involved. And if you want to know the exact parking requirements in the MR1 zone versus the HDR zone, it's it's in our zoning and development ordinance right now, but I don't have those details in our staff recommendation because we're not looking at parking requirements right right now because there's no development that we're we're approving in this application.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? It it looks like it's a great fit It it looks like it's a great fit for the area of being so close to the schools and our main arterials. I it looks like it's a very good fit. Any other input? Well, if there are no more questions from the Commissioners, move on. We have received, have we received any correspondence on this matter in any way?
I would defer to Melissa on that.
Melissa, have we had any correspondence?
There have been no formal comments received. It has been noticed as we went over already. So all the proper notices have gone out. We have received an email from Oak Lodge Water Services just with questions about the process. More concern about the design review phase and opportunity for them to be involved in that, but no comments directly on this application.
I see. Okay.
I know that, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, I know that the applicant though was meeting with the Oak Lodge or sorry, Oak Grove Community Council CPO. So he had attended one of their meetings to go over the project. So I know that he's been involved talking to them as well.
Okay. Are there any other government agencies here to provide technical information related to the application?
I'm not seeing any.
Any more questions from the Commissioners? I guess let's move on to testimony. The applicant may now present the proposal. You have a maximum of sixty minutes. There will be, are there any representatives of the community planning organizations or hamlets here to speak? Each organization will have ten minutes to testify. Community planning organizations are part of the citizens' involvement program for Clackamas County. They are advisory to the Board of County Commissioners on land use matters affecting their communities. CPOs are notified of proposed land use actions and legislative changes within their boundaries. They may review the applications and provide recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. Clackamas County initiated the Hamlet Village Program as an offshoot of the Complete Communities Program in two thousand and six. It was in response to the grassroots efforts by citizens to become more involved with the county government to help support their community. There are three established hamlets, Hamlet of Beaver Creek, Malino Hamlet, and Stafford Hamlet. All hamlets hold regular monthly meetings. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this application? Each person will have three minutes to testify.
Okay, we have, the applicant has been moved over as a panelist now if he would like to speak.
Sure, I would love to say just a few brief comments. I'd like to clarify that the condominiums that are onsite, it's actually just a triplex. Three were built, three were never built. Those have been econom minimized, so they're, I said that wrong, I don't know how to say that. But they're no longer condominiums, they're simply apartments. So that that was unraveled. And then the property line was reestablished to the original platted property lines. So lot seventeen hundred is now fully vacant and detached from the prior development. My proposal is is really just twelve residential units. We'll see how that goes in the design review course. And then I wanted to clarify that I did attend two meetings with the Oak Grove CPO, one with the Board of Directors, and then one with the community as a whole. They are excited about the project. I felt that was very favorable. Of course, the, you know, main interest will be in the design review. So as we get through that, hopefully. That's all I really have to add. I think everything else is pretty straightforward.
Any questions from the Commission?
I just have a question. Looking at the map, this property we're talking about is on a corner lot. Is it on two, two streets, two, two streets?
It is not on a corner lot. Immediately to the north is McQueen's Bar and Grill. So this property affronts River Road only.
Okay. My major concern is, you know, with twelve units, parking and any parking on the street there, just to curiosity. We have parking problems all over the place, so that's all my comments are.
I, you know, I think as the staff, as Melissa indicated, parking concerns will be a probably a significant topic in design review.
Anything else from the Commission? Thank you, Mr. Hantle.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me.
Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application? Each person will have three minutes to testify.
I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay. Does anyone wish to provide neutral testimony? Each person will have three minutes to testify.
Again, no hands.
Wish to provide rebuttal, I guess there's no reason to. Does the staff wish to provide a rebuttal? No, there's no reason really for that either. Does any person wish to request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application? If someone does request to present additional testimony, the Commission will need to determine if they wish to continue the hearing or hold the record open. If the Commission grants a continuance, the hearing shall be continued to a date, time, place certain. At seven days within the date of the initial hearing, if the Commission leaves the record open for any additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony, the record shall be left open for at least seven days. The applicant is allowed at least seven days after the record is closed to all other parties to submit final written arguments in support of the application. Alternatively, the applicant may waive this seven day period. Does the applicant choose to waive the additional seven days? I don't think so. Okay. After determining how long the record will be left open, you will need to set a date, but I don't think we're leaving it open. Closing the hearing, public testimony part of the hearing is now closed. Alternatively, you will announce that the hearing is continued and state the date and time, or okay, we don't even need to go there. Planning Commission discussion, are there any further questions of staff from the Planning Commission? Is there any discussion by the Planning Commission?
I'll go first. Seems like a pretty straightforward case, given the lack of questions. Kind of a no brainer, I guess. So I'm in support of the staff's recommendation.
That a motion, Tom?
I can make one if you like.
I'll, I will second it.
Chair, before the Commission, I have a comment that I'd like to make if that's all right.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, Commissioner Peterson.
Right.
I just, and my comment is really not, I am in totally support of both, both Commissioners' motion and a second. My, my comment kind of follows along the lines of Commissioner Wilson, who indicated some questions about parking lots and, you know, spaces and whatnot. I think one of the things that is really difficult for me to fully embrace and understand when we make these decisions is that some of the issues that we're all very passionate about, like parking and and stormwater management and and traffic and all those other issues, we really don't have a lot of ability to understand what the incremental changes of this nature leads to, to the big picture of the community. So while this particular change that we're talking about today, I'm, again, I agree with you, Commissioner Peterson. It's pretty straightforward and I am in support of approving it. But I have this part of my side, a little part of me just keeps thinking, you know, how do we continue to understand the additive effects of each of these changes to the whole of the community and the impacts that each of these additional changes make? And I don't have a solution. It's just, and I'm not at all in opposition of this proposal. I just, it kind of grinds at me and and so that's just a comment that I wanted to make before the Commission moved forward with the with the decision. Thank you.
I'll just concur, Carrie, that I share that concern, right? I think the challenge is that most of this, those discussions will in fact happen in the design review process. And I'm sure that the, all the cumulative impacts will be considered. I think the challenge is that, you know, the way the county governance is structured, we're just kind of outside of that loop. And it's frustrating because it's really hard to make these big picture changes without understanding that minutia. And I think it's a, it's a flaw in the, in the way that the the whole system works that probably needs some more discussion at some point.
Well, let me say this. I live on a lot, a property that's about an acre. And I can't imagine how this would look with twenty five units on it. It just, it boggles my mind that within a residential area, primarily made up of, you know, single home dwellings, putting in, you know, on an, on an acre, twenty five units, or on a half an acre, twelve units. That would be a major change in my neighborhood. I'm not against it. I think it's it's probably a good idea. But I, I'm, I'm very concerned about how we proceed with the density issue in in certain areas. So that's just my comments. Thank you.
I have to agree with Commissioner Pack, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Pasto. You know, when will the change come? You know, we're all working towards that. I think that's why we're planning Commissioners. I hope to see areas, not just one lot at a time, but whole neighborhoods make the change at once. And I think that's how it's going to have to happen. You can't burden one property owner with a whole idea that we're going to make a change somehow or another. It has to be a community that does that. And, you know, as close as this is to the river, yes, I'd love to bring up stormwater issues too. But you'd be burdening the, another very positive thing that's happening where more housing is coming in on just a half acre. So that is a huge plus, you know, with the, with transportation so close and schools so close. I, I think this is, you know, this is the way it's supposed to go.
I'd like to jump in on this. This, I guess my thoughts are is if the county is moving towards higher density, that would mean we'd have to revisit a lot of zoning designations throughout the unincorporated areas anyway, which would require some plan or activity to kind of justify why there needs to be this change and why they need to densify. And in, and in that process, there would be all the other analysis that would have to go with it to help justify what adverse impacts it might be by changing the density. They, you know, unfortunately for us, all we just see is the ones, just the individual applications. And so to get to your point, Carrie, it's really a question for county, is there an effort, is there a plan to look at densifying unincorporated areas more? And if so, what would that entail and what would our role be in moving forward with that? To me, that that kind of gets to your question because we're never going to be able to address it on the individual applications. So that's my two cents. So do you want me to move approval of the staff's recommendation then?
Okay.
Okay, I'm doing it.
Are we going to do this in two steps, one with the comprehensive plan and one with the zone change?
That's not necessary.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary to separate them out.
So do I need to change anything?
We have a motion.
Okay, so I need to state what we're approving, right? So I'm, I'm moved that we approve the staff recommendation for the zone change for case files Z one six seven twenty one CP and Z O one six eight twenty one Z A P.
Have a second?
Second.
If there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Any absentations? Motion passes. Public hearing is now closed. Okay, Darcy, where do we go next?
On schedule?
Yeah, on the agenda, I think our next item is schedule review because there's no minutes.
Then schedule review.
There's, I don't have their business.
Okay.
Unless you have something.
No.
And then there's no minutes. The last meeting was a study session.
So am I doing the schedule review because I'm really excited to? Like, I'm not being sarcastic, actually.
No, it's all you.
So it's on page two of your agenda. And so we are on June twenty eighth. On July twelfth, we are having a work session with you. And when I say we, I mean me and some, and Karen Birig and Jennifer and some other staff. And we are talking about the Land Use Housing Strategies Project. And so I was really glad to hear this conversation that you were starting to delve into. Because this project, we talked to you about it a while back, sort of when we were scoping out this project. And it is a project that talks about making changes to our zoning code related to housing, to some extent related to density and increasing density in a number of areas, some of which we have to do. some of which we have to do because of state law and some of which is optional. We will have a conversation about parking, specifically parking for multifamily housing. And we are going to be talking about things like affordable housing density bonuses and some other housing issues. And these are potential changes that would apply through the course of the whole housing strategies pretty broadly across the urban area. And so I can't remember which one of you said it, but it has to do with whole neighborhoods making changes and not doing necessarily these one-off changes all the time, which of course could still happen with zone changes. So that's why I was really excited. I was biting my tongue when you were having that conversation. Expect to have a much more in-depth conversation about those things on July 12th. Then on July 26th, you have a public hearing for ZDO 280. That's Glenn Hamburg's package of the minor and time sensitive amendments. I believe he just recently had a study session on the items that were going into that package. August 9th, you'll be seeing Melissa again for another comp plan zone change proposal. And this one promises to be interesting and challenging and different, so it should be fun. And I believe, Darcy, on August 23rd, I don't know if it's confirmed, it's not on the schedule, we have a public hearing for the Phase 1 of the housing strategies, which again is my project that we will have the study session on on the 12th. Has that been confirmed?
Yes, that was confirmed after I mailed the agendas.
Totally fine.
And it is confirmed and it's on your calendar now.
Okay. And that's as far as I know, the 23rd of August.
I'm adding it to my calendar right now.
I had a question, since the state of Oregon is going to open up on June 30th, no matter what, are we going to return to in-person meetings starting in July?
We don't have an answer for you on that yet.
I'd asked Darcy that question earlier. Same question.
I think as soon as we know.
I'm looking forward to seeing all your smiling faces in person again, personally, so I hope that's the case. As efficient as these meetings are with Zoom, they're just not the same, in my opinion. I think it's, I'm looking forward to being back in person again, so I hope that's the case.
I'm looking forward to meeting some of you in person.
Exactly.
I haven't met anybody in person, so. Is there an opportunity to do something a little bit more social outside of the meeting after the county or state opens up again? Just a question.
I suppose there's always that opportunity.
Open up their backyard or something.
Let's see, I think we're down at the river delta with the watershed council.
Well, let's see.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a comment. I really appreciate the communication we had back about the action that the Board of County Commissioners were taking on our recommendations. And I think that was a very positive step to let us know our impact or our input into the decisions that the Board of County Commissioners are making. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Martha, I'm excited about what's coming up. Yeah, absolutely.
Really interesting.
Yeah, housing strategies, I'm excited. Yes, I feel a little guilty staying home every second Tuesday and fourth, or second Monday and fourth Monday, not doing anything when we have homeless. We need housing strategies.
Yeah.
I think that's it for the schedule review, and I believe that's it for the agenda.
I believe you are right.
Okay. Well, I think from here on out, we adjourn.
We'll see y'all in a couple of weeks.